All right, here, let me pull my. My agenda up. Boy, I tell you, I thought I had it and I don't. Okay, there we are. All right. So I'd like to call the meeting of the City of Kenmore Planning Commission for April 5th, 2022 to order. Our first item of business is public comments, so we will like to hear from the public for three minutes regarding anything that they want to let us know about. So Rita, do we have any of our public that want to speak to us tonight?
We just want to give it a second. We do have one attendee, so just a second. And while we wait for that, I'd like to apologize. The meeting minutes are not ready for you tonight. I know I said they would be ready and they are not, so I will have those for you at the next meeting if that's okay.
That would be fine.
Awesome. Thank you. And I see no hands at this point.
Okay, so since we don't have any hands, we'll move to the agenda items that Lori is about ready to turn on her her video and her voice. And hi Lori. You have a staff memo and a very detailed draft of amendments, so I have, unless there's objection, so that we don't lose track of what you're trying to get across to us in the staff memo, please feel free, very free, to lead us to appropriate pages, pages specific of the attachment one of the amendments, so that we don't get lost and neither does the public. Thank you.
Well, good evening to all of you. Thank you Chair Thompson. And so tonight is the first presentation of the draft Missing Middle Housing Zoning Code Amendments. So the amendments were crafted based on the policy directions you've given us in past meetings and also we tried to listen to the community's concern about compatibility with existing single-family houses and in an attempt to make that compatibility more likely. So the goal for this evening is to walk through the amendments and I think it's probably easiest to do that by going through the memo based on sort of general topics. And then if you want to look at the language, I've identified the page numbers and we can we can go to that. But as you know, we are trying to aim for a public hearing on the Conference of Plan Amendments and the Missing Middle Zoning Code Amendments for May 17th. That's three meetings from now. And really to keep on track, trying to get your recommendations to the city council in June, we're hoping that this evening we can ask you to commit to that meeting data. And it's important for a couple of reasons. One is that we stay on track, but second, we're hoping to take this month, April, really to notify the community about the amendments and the changes that you're looking at and do a good job advertising that. We're trying to hit the city's quarterly newsletter, which goes to all the households in the city. And so if we have a date, we can begin that advertising now. I want to reassure you, I think that in this meeting and the two following meetings, you can probably come pretty close to having a preliminary recommendation. If we scheduled the hearing and you weren't there yet, you you don't make your final recommendation until after the hearing. And the public could certainly comment on whatever draft you have in front of you. So again, after we go through everything tonight, I'm going to come back and say, are we okay with May 17th? Because I really would like to advertise that date. So turning to the amendments. Oh. Oh, you're muted. Chair Thompson, you're muted.
I'm so sorry. I should be better at that. So are you saying that next meeting, we're going to have to put our nose to the grindstone and make sure that we have something that's productive for the public hearing?
What I'm suggest, I mean, that would certainly be ideal. What I'm suggesting is that there's not just the 19th, April 19th, there's also your first meeting in May. And what I would propose to do is to constantly be adding your materials to the website. So all of our advertising will direct people to the website to look at the content. And so if we're if we're constantly adding your information, they're going to have the best and the latest. And so I think the fundamental question is, do you think after we go through everything tonight, that you'll be in a position to feel comfortable with a preliminary recommendation after two more meetings, basically?
Well.
Before the hearing on the 17th?
And this is for a discussion for the entire membership of the commission, but
Yeah, absolutely.
It seems to me that we have to provide a reasonable draft to our citizens to give them time to digest it so that they can come with a reasonable set of testimony related to the draft. So I would seem to me that we need to really focus and try to get to 90% of where we're at next meeting after this meeting. I don't know how the rest of the commission feels about that, but I'm looking at that as a goal. Mike, Mark, Mike?
I'll answer the both. I agree with you, Dwight. I think we should make our best effort to try and get to that point by the end of the next meeting. I am concerned though about putting out, let's say unfinished work out onto the website and creating confusion, particularly if we're going to be updating as we go along. I know it creates a lot of pressure and work on you Lori, but I really I'm concerned just seeing how we happen to have these telegraph messages that start where people hear the wrong thing or they hear something that was later updated. And so we end up having to constantly chase back things that that people just haven't caught up with. So see what other people think, but I would be concerned about putting things out on the website when it isn't quite soup yet.
Other comments? I think Mike brings up a good point. There you go, Nathan. And then Mariel, you're next.
Lori, is that what you were thinking already? Did you say that you were going to start posting as we went along, stuff that was completed? Or were you planning on putting out what we have right now and then changing it kind of like what Commissioner Vanderlin was talking about?
Yeah, it depends on the topic. So for the Conference of Plan Amendments, you've already made your preliminary recommendations. So those will go up as preliminary and basically your final preliminary. For the Missing Middle Zoning Code Amendments, I had envisioned putting up each of your packets. So April tonight, April 5, April 19, May 3rd. If the commission feels uncomfortable with that, we certainly could hold it. I don't think we want to hold it past May 3rd if we can settle on that May 17th date. So that people have a couple of weeks at least to review the materials. I guess I was thinking that they could sort of follow along the process. Each packet would have presumably the minutes from the last meeting. The videos are available, but again, I totally understand Commissioner Vanderlin's concern. So if you would prefer that I not do that, that's
I Nathan, Mariel had the next and then year after Mariel.
Thank you. And I mean, idea or thought that I had. I think if it's the packets that you're going to be sharing and updating throughout the process, I prefer that we air on the side of transparency to our residents. I think this is already information that is shared and I hope that I'm coming out loud here. This is information that's already been shared and you know, basically televised on our videos. And so I think as long as it's very apparent, the bold language, maybe with a different color that says this is updated and with the date. You know, I think that it should hopefully mitigate any confusion by the public's part and it also allows
To Nathan?
I was thinking something similar. I have the same concerns as I think others do here. If if it is our intention to maybe make the public aware of what we're working on, kind of a work in progress, I think I'd feel more personally comfortable putting on the website a link to the document center or a link to the YouTube page to be able to watch our conversations and to look at those documents. But I don't know how I feel about mixing agendas and proposed discussion topics with completed works that we've already finished. I think for the webpage, that might be a good spot just to store what we've already are preliminary recommendations and what we want to take there and what we're kind of finalized on. But also make the public aware, just again, on the same place, hey, these are the discussions we're having. Here's where you can follow them. But again, I don't know how I feel about maybe mixing in stuff that we haven't quite approved or recommended yet, along with stuff that we are ready to put forward to the public.
Derek, did I see your hand or that is is okay, scratching his eye there. Okay. Any any other comments? So what do we want to do? Tracy, thank you.
Yeah, Lori, can you explain post May 17th, what the schedule is and why you've chosen that as the date by which you'd like us to be done with our preliminary recommendations?
Right. So post May 17th, you would be coming back on your first meeting in June and making presumably your final recommendations, unless you heard something so dramatically different in the public hearing that you really wanted to revisit them. So that that meeting would be dedicated to finalizing the recommendations. And if that can happen, that first meeting in June, then a joint meeting with the city council, because of the the timing of their agenda materials would happen at the end of the month. I think it's like June 27th, something like that. So really after the public hearing, there's a meeting for you to finalize your recommendations and then it goes to the city council and we go as a group and present your recommendations to council.
And then in the greater scheme of the overall timing of things, we have to have that done by the end of June?
You don't have to have it done by the end of June. We are trying to finish it up because it was supposed to be the initial schedule when we took it to the council in at the end of January was we were hoping to have it finished up in April. And then because of the TOD panel and some other things, which is why we split the TOD off because it was moving toward the September deadline and that seemed way too late. We are trying to get it adopted in the first part of the year because on the heels of that, we have several other things waiting. The transportation element, the public services, utilities and economic development elements. And at the end of the year, the climate, the climate change element is supposed to begin. So we have a very full plate and so we are there was never an assumption that this project would carry on all the way through 2022. It needs to come to conclusion and we're already a bit behind, not for any bad reason. It's just that's where we are. To try to finish up in the first half of the year would be ideal.
You know, with that said, I would like to say with on the record and to the public that we're not in such a hurry that at the public hearing, if we're going to take the public's feedback seriously and that we will look at it and consider amendments if as appropriate. And we're not going to rush due to a deadline to not listen to our public feedback. I think that's an important point to say, is there any objection to that?
Okay, you're here. Well said.
For the record, that I think that if you would read or read us the should that please make that part of the minutes that we had consensus on that point. Okay, Lori, you have been waiting for a while to get started. So now it is all yours and I'm going to mute myself.
All right. Well, as I suggested, I hope we can move through this using the memo rather than going page by page to the amendments. The memo sort of encapsulates the topics and then the amendments are found in different places in in the changes in attachment one. So I think it's easiest. So unless there are any objections, I'm going to move forward using the memo as my template. Okay, all right. So significant components of the amendments, and there are many pages, I know. The first section really deals with new definitions for duplexes and triplexes. Historically, we've had just apartment and there's the broad category of multifamily and then there's apartment and townhouse. So we have added duplex and triplex to recognize those housing forms and then we use those in the regulations as we describe them. Commissioner Vanderland had a question about ownership. The duplex and triplex rules indicate that there is a single owner of the building and that owner may live in the building or that owner may rent out the units in the building. As compared with the townhouse definition, which really specifies that a townhouse is maybe in a in a row of units, but the townhouse is under a single ownership. And we made that distinction because we're trying to separate out the notion of a duplex that is really a townhouse. And I'll try to describe this. So say you have two units side by side. That could be a townhouse if each, there were two owners. One owner owned one townhouse, the other owner owned the other townhouse and then the common areas would be probably owned together. That's different from a duplex where you have a single owner of both units. And again, the owner could live in one and rent out the other one, or the owner could rent out both of them. So that was why we made the distinction. Because the standards for townhouses are different. And so we were trying to craft a new definition so that we could focus just on duplexes or triplexes. If the commission and Commissioner Vanderland may have expressed some interest in allowing duplexes or triplexes to become condominiums and individually owned, the commission could make that choice. We would have to adjust the regulations because there would then be a different process. You would have to do a binding site plan. There would be technical details that would have to be added if a person wanted to build a duplex or triplex and make it a condominium. So that's a policy choice for the planning commission. As it is now, a duplex or triplex could be built with just a building permit. If you, if it's ownership housing, then you have to go through a more formal process using state rules to subdivide the ownership. So any comments about that or direction?
Thank you, Lori. That was a good summary. I'll elaborate just a little bit. Particularly about what my concern is. We're focusing now on duplex and triplexes as our missing middle solution. My concern here is that if we define a duplex or and triplex as units that are essentially basically predominantly rental units. If you don't have those having individual owner occupancy, I think that has some implications for the city and the type of development we'd have. Given the cost of development today, you're talking about a project that's going to be probably in the $2 million range. And you're going to end up with rents and development. They're going to be duplexes and triplexes at a very high income level. So I'm concerned that that's where we would be leading. If we, my thought is, and I'm looking for validation on this, is if we have more of a condo approach, where you could have a development of a duplex or triplex and you could individually own a component, a component unit, then you have, I think, much more of an opportunity for owner occupancy. This is, you know, we talked about need or desire to be able to build wealth over time by painting homeownership. I think that would be much more likely in that scenario than it would be when you have a duplex or a triplex that essentially needs to be developed by an investor development combination and would end up being as a clearly a rental situation rather than owner occupancy. That's, that's my logic.
Nathan?
Mike, could I ask for some clarification on your idea there? Are you saying that you're not quite in favor of defining duplexes and triplexes in terms of rental ability, but more kind of sticking to townhouse ideas? But townhouses that look like duplexes and triplexes?
Well, this is, this is the interesting piece to this because I think we get into semantics. Now, when is it a townhouse? When is a duplex a townhouse? When is a triplex a townhouse? When is a townhouse a duplex? This is very confusing, I think, in the code and needs to be clarified. Where I really focus on is the idea that a duplex and a triplex cannot be owner occupied. It cannot be, if you have a situation where you can't independently sell the one or both of the units, they're not individually owned. It's going to take a significant amount of dollars to be able to develop that. It's going to be developed by investors and developers who are, and that's going to end up being rental property. If you can't own it, then the only other option is to rent it. So I think my fear is that we'd end up with our missing middle housing area really turning into a predominantly rental unit rather than owner occupancy, has a very different, I think, flavor and implications for the city. So I'm looking for an option here that doesn't preclude the fact that you could develop a duplex or triplex with the intention of selling the individual units as a final final transaction. Does that help, Nathan?
Yes, I see what you're saying there. And I had a follow-up question for Lori that comes off of this as well. How difficult would it be if a unit or a building is developed as a duplex or triplex for it to be converted later on and each unit individually sold and then become townhouses?
Well, we probably would adjust the definitions a little bit, but my understanding is that the process would be a binding site plan, just as you would with a row of townhouses, you would. It's a little more complicated because they're potentially stacked. So I probably would have to get some input from the city attorney. But it's it's possible you could add that as an option. I I would hesitate to preclude any opportunity to rent a duplex or a triplex. But if you wanted to make it additive, that you could approach it either as ownership housing or as rental housing. I think that is an option. You'll remember that there was the idea that a person with a duplex could rent the other unit and help subsidize their their building.
Derek? Go ahead, Derek.
Yeah, I would think that, and I agree with all this, and I think Mike made some great points there and addressed some of my concerns as well. The, what you're asking Nathan about the, can it be built with the intention of apartments or duplex and then converted over to individual ownership should fall somewhere within the specs that already exist for a unit that I actually purchased over a decade ago in Woodenville that was used to be apartment complex and they converted it to condos. And that was being done quite a bit just before the real estate bust. Where you could get your hands on these. And then as a condo, once it was converted to condo, then the stipulations came into place just as any condo association typically has, only a percentage of the units within that association can be rented out at any given time with non-owner occupied. So that the whole place couldn't be flipped into rentals. And that kind of kept, it's the same as a neighborhood vibe. You wanted to make sure that mostly people that owned were living there and sure, it's not always feasible. Someone gets sent away for work or things change in your life where you can't live there. It's not feasible. So you can rent it out. It's not against the rules. But you just wanted to make sure that there was a balance of how many were owner occupied versus how many were rentals at any given time.
Anybody else? Mike?
I just answered, I think Lori's implied question. I'm not proposing that you would preclude rental. What I'd like to have is an option for owner occupancy and purchase. That way, yes, you could have a duplex where an individual had sufficient funds, could develop a duplex, live in half of it and rent out the rest. But that would, again, that's a substantial, if you think about a $2 million project and a 20% down payment and then having to go to a bank because you don't have an asset, you're going to need a construction loan. This is very complicated and very expensive. I think more likely what you'd have if we don't have an option that would allow for owner occupancy and treatment of these as individual saleable units, you're going to end up with a predominantly rental within within our missing middle. So that's what I'm looking for. I don't want to preclude. But I think a condo type of option, I think would give us a better mix and balance than what we have in the code suggested right now.
Yeah, does anybody else have something different? Go ahead, Derek.
Yeah, and I agree with what you're saying. And I think that's ideal because that's almost pushing for a lower cost entry into ownership and keeping more vested interest in that community because you've got owners, more owners as a part of it versus someone who's done in six months and moving along. I think it's great. I mean, we need a balance of both, but to open up that opportunity for a lower entry ownership, like is phenomenal.
Exactly.
All right, Lori, go ahead. Next.
Am I see, I heard consensus or I heard yes from three. So I'm waiting to hear consensus from the group or?
Tracy?
I have a question. Maybe this is mostly for Mike, but maybe for others who are also in agreement. Could you flesh out for me what the concern is about having renters in these missing middle housing types? And I'm guessing maybe it's not renters because you're saying that that providing some opportunity for renters would be a positive thing, but I'm wondering about what the what what the balance is and when it's tipped too far, what the what the concern is?
Sure. My concern is if we define a duplex or a triplex in the way it's in the code right now, you would only have renters. And what that would do is it would preclude the opportunity for individuals to own their own, their own, their own home. That wouldn't be, that would never hit the market. And so what I'm asking then is, let's take more of a condo approach, which would allow these duplexes and and triplexes to be developed in a way that will allow individuals to purchase their, rather than rent.
So right now, the point to me reads that somebody could own the whole unit. Right? So it's not as if there would be no ownership. And they could rent half.
Yes, they
You're advocating for being able to have ownership on both, in both units.
What my assumption here is that if you've got a $2 million project and you need to have 400,000 in a minimum and you need to be able to go to a bank and get credit for a construction and you need to have 400,000 in a minimum, and you need to be able to go to a bank and get credit for a construction loan. People who are going to be doing that are going to be doing it as an investment. And they're going to be developing properties for rent. Uh, they, they're not going to be, uh, they're not going to be turning around and selling that duplex uh, to some other person in, in likelihood. If they did, uh, then again, that would end up being a rental property. If we have the option here for the investor slash developer to take a condo approach, to be able to develop the property and then sell the individual units to owner occupers, you have, you then create a pathway for people to ownership, which they wouldn't have otherwise.
Thank you.
And Tracy, to, to add on that, I think what you were also asking is the concern is that by having a duplex, a, a new build duplex, the cost of producing one of those right now, the investment is so expensive that that's not going to produce units with affordable rent. It's not going to hit this target that we're looking for. A new build right now is going to be so incredibly expensive to get the keys to the door that those rentals are not going to hit the missing middle. Those.
Absolutely, exactly. I mean, that's, you're talking about a $2 million development here. You're, you're going to have to develop each one, a duplex would be a million dollars. Uh, you're going to be way out of the, uh, medium, uh, a median income level for anybody to be able to afford something like that. That incentive is going to be to develop at the highest level.
Yeah.
Marielle?
I have a question, but I'm not sure, Lori, did you want to, were you wanting to respond to what Mike was saying right now?
Well, I, I only wanted to, uh, point out that in some cases here, we're talking about small, smaller buildings. So I do want to acknowledge that, I mean, $2 million may or may not be the appropriate number. And certainly over time, over, you know, new construction is always more expensive than, uh, older construction. But over time, providing an opportunity for, um, rental units into the future is important. And so I, I hear the, the interest in having ownership housing, but I also do think that the rental housing is important, but I've already said that, so I don't think I need to say it again.
So, um, I do want to say I understand Mike's point and concern because I share it as well. But I do have two questions, um, thinking one, from a policy perspective, would we then as a body be needing to put in language with regards to percentage of renter versus owner for development of these duplex, triplex slash condos developments? And then my second question slash comment is really that if they, to play a little bit of a devil's advocate, if they, if, if, if they are, if condos are allowed to be part of these buildings, and I'm not saying I'm opposed to the idea, but if condos are allowed to be part of these buildings, the cost of a condo is not necessarily cheap either. And how would that necessarily help? If it's a $2 million development and a percentage of renting and a percentage is a condo, then I would imagine that the renting price will match almost what your mortgage price would be for the condo. And so, um, I, I'm a little bit concerned and perplexed as to how it would, um, help to resolve the, the question of affordable middle housing.
So, but.
Debbie?
Well, I'm sure Lori's going to jump in. Missing middle is not what, is not really providing affordable housing at the, um, lowest or high, the, the highest level of affordability. The intent for missing middle housing is to, is to be just that. It's kind of the middle range. It's not the most expensive, it's not the least expensive, not the most affordable, not the least affordable. It's right there in the middle. So that's the, the point of this. So I think it's sort of disingenuous to say that the purpose for missing middle is to provide affordability at, say, 30% medium income or 50% medium income. That's not what it will be. It is providing, it is filling a gap in the market for smaller units that people might be able to afford. It's still considered more in line of a single-family housing choice than an apartment choice. So it's providing greater choice, it's increasing housing supply. By virtue of it being smaller, it will be relatively more affordable than a traditional single-family home.
Go ahead, Tracy.
Yeah, I guess I do feel like, as Debbie has described, this missing middle housing solution is a market based solution, and it's not going to get us where we need to be in terms of, of truly affordable housing. And so that makes me feel like, I, I, I guess I'm not sure about the problem that we're trying to solve here with parsing out with, you know, whether both units can be owned or, or what the problem is with both being rented. I don't, I'm not, I'm not clear on that myself because just as a straight policy issue, I don't see a problem with having these housing types, and then I don't see what problem we're solving by trying to restrict it even further.
So I'll speak as staff. We weren't trying to restrict it. We weren't trying to say you can only rent. It, it, the issue would not come up. And Commissioner Vanderland raised it after he read the definitions and said, well, what about, why not think about condos for these, uh, duplexes and triplexes? So again, staff is not opposed to the idea of, of those being duplexes or triplexes. I would certainly steer away from certain percentages that can be rented and certain percentages that have to be owned. I think that would be a complication we would not want to pursue. Um, but if the commission wishes to allow ownership of these duplex and triplex units, we'll craft regulations that make that clear, that you can either, you can handle it either way, either as a condo or as a, as a ownership and then with a rental.
Okay, any further comments? I think we need, oh, one more, Derek.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to piggyback on what Lori just said there, and I, I'm agreeing. A, the city should not be involved in what percentage is rentable and owned in a condo situation. That's up to the condo association for that building, for them to decide. That's not a city thing. Um, we wouldn't, we wouldn't want the city to try and take that on because, yeah, nightmare. And as far as the duplex and triplex, from my perspective, versus townhomes where it's more of a condo owner opportunity, I'm just saying, I think we should support having that option there so that it is something viable and it attracts a different bed of investors, or maybe people get together to go in on something like that, where it could be shared from the ground up, um, could be built together as an association or a group of people who get together to, again, bring in more investment opportunity to solve this problem of a little bit more dense housing, but still individual homeownership, uh, is a really cool feature. And I'm not opposed to duplexes and triplexes of any sort, but if we're going to have them, why not add on this, this coding that can allow for them to be owned? Um, because you're going to get two different parts. There's only so many people that want to live in that kind of a situation. That's not a for everybody kind of a situation. And, um, having the triplexes and duplexes does attract investors. It's not going to be the cheapest rent, as Mike has pointed out, because they're getting more and more expensive to build. But it does solve a piece of the density problem. And, uh, they can be nicer than the standard block apartment. So I think it's, I'm supporting all sides of it. I just want to see the ownership option, I think is really cool. I think that just brings a nicer dimension to it.
So are we good on the ownership option as well as the rest? Are we nodding at that? Thank you, Lori. Go off to the next topic.
All right. Um, and, uh, so before I step into the next topic, I, I wanted to go back to Commissioner Vanderland's second question that he had emailed me, and that had, I, I, this is an easy, easy one, I think. He had emailed to ask, well, what about an ADU? Could someone with a duplex or a triplex also do an ADU? And, and the answer to that is no. The way the ADU rules are written is that an accessory dwelling unit has to be accessory to a single-family detached dwelling unit. So as the rules are written, that could not happen. So I'll just, I don't know if you had any other further questions about that, but we'll put that aside.
I'll just jump in, and thank you for that answer. I presumed that was true, but I wanted to make sure we took that off the table. Uh, I, I had read in some other areas, particularly down in California, where there were situations like that, where people had bought up a single-family home, scraped it off, built a duplex, uh, under a certain set of rules, and then later came back and added one or two more ADUs on the same lot, under a different set of rules. I want to make sure we don't, we're not tripping it into that situation. But it's, I think, right, as you said, the way our code is written today, you can't have an ADU, you could only have an ADU ancillary to a single family.
Correct. Okay, so.
That's applying commission's understanding, please, are we good on that? Okay.
I, I have one quick question about the, the ADUs. The, do we have any rules or are we writing any rules? Like, I'm drawing a blank on using them as, uh, what do they call that, uh, short-term rental, the Airbnb stuff?
We have not taken up that topic. That, uh, a couple of years ago, uh, when the planning commission looked at and the city council adopted the ADU rules, the question of whether to address that issue came up, and the decision at that time was no, not to tackle that question. So if that were to come up, it would be a future, we're program item.
I think that's a good point, Derek. So Lori, go ahead and move on.
Okay. All right, so the next topic is lot dimensions rather than lot size. So, um, Tony Perez with Opticoast Design, and Opticoast Design created the term missing middle housing, has worked with us to craft what he believes and what we believe are, uh, lot dimension and building dimension standards that will be compatible with single-family residences. And the background work he did, we identified several study areas. We found dimensions of, it was more than 100 different parcels in our, uh, R6, close to transit area. He took those numbers and, and worked with them, and this is where he came up with the lot dimensions. So this is different from the way single-family residences are managed. Those residences have a minimum lot size. In R6, it's 5,400, uh, square feet. In this case, for duplexes and triplexes, he is recommending, and we agree, that rather than specify a minimum lot size, we should specify minimum lot dimensions. You can translate those dimensions into a lot size. But the idea is that you can build these types of housing units if your lot is of a certain size. And so for, uh, duplexes, the minimum size would be a 40-foot wide lot and 100-foot deep lot. And for triplexes, it would be a 50-foot wide lot and a 100-foot deep lot. So again, that, that ends up being 4,000 or 5,000, but it doesn't matter if you have the lot area. If you don't have the dimensions, you could not build the structure. So any questions on that, uh, topic?
I don't see any, oh, there's Mike.
I, just because I think it needs to be said, I think that's an excellent suggestion, and I support it.
Okay, so now moving on to the next major topic, which is the dimensional standards for buildings. Again, the idea was you can only do this if you have a lot of a certain size. And then on that lot of a certain size, you can do a building of a certain size. And the standards, uh, were crafted looking at a number of things, looking at setbacks, looking at where parking uh, would or could be. And they, uh, they, it was basically a math, a math calculation to determine how big a building could be, and then looking, is that an appropriate size building, et cetera? So you saw the two tables, one for duplexes, one for triplexes, and they, it specifies what your lot width is and says, okay, if you have this lot width, you can have this wide of a building. And if you have a lot depth of this, you can have this deep of a building uh, measured from the street. In, in the case of, of Kenmore Street also means like a, um, a private access way. So just to clarify that, but anyway. Any questions about how those calculations work or?
I don't see any questions.
All right. Okay, well, the next, uh, excuse me, the next major topic is height. And this was a really interesting one. So the city's current single-family zoning rules allow you to go up to 35 feet for a building. And 35 feet is enough to do three stories. Um, and in a traditional neighborhood, it's always a little shocking to see a three-story, uh, building. So what, um, Opticoast is recommending is that we, in fact, cap the height at 30 feet, but also add an additional standard, which would only allow the eaves of the building, not the eaves on a gable, but the eaves of the building to be topped out at 24 feet. And there was an illustration of that in, uh, I believe it was Attachment Three. There was a drawing that showed, here's the height, the top of the building, and then here's the height to the eve, because the idea really is that you don't want to go over two and a half stories. That would be a traditional, traditional, that's in quotes, uh, single-family residence. And again, what we're trying to do is ensure compatibility, um, with the surrounding residences.
Yeah, I, I think that's personally a, a fine idea. I have a few that go beyond in my neighborhood, and they do not in any way, shape or form blend in with the surrounding area. So I, I'm somewhat happy to see something in here. However, the eaves thing takes me back to, what was it, the 1970s when Afrans were very popular? Wondering, can you take the eaves all the way down to the ground and qualify for this?
You'd still be capped out at 30 feet.
Okay, anybody else? See none, go ahead, Lori.
All right. Okay, so the next one really is talking about, uh, densities. And you'll remember that when we first, um, talked about densities, I was assuming that duplexes would be twice the density and triplex would be three times the density. But actually, by moving to this other approach, where you're looking at minimum lot width and when minimum lot depth, the densities are different. And I actually put the calculations in the memo, so you could follow along about how the density calculation was done. Again, the density is not what's determining how much can be built. What's determining how much can be built is the lot width and the lot depth. But, um, to provide density information in cases of new subdivisions, for example, I have included it here, and I'm happy to walk through those calculations if that would be helpful. There are, uh, there's, there are two kinds of, uh, density provided in the chart. Base density is just flat out what the density is. There's another thing called maximum density, and that appears in, um, single-family zones, and I think our multifamily zones as well, uh, which allow a slightly increased density if you are providing something. One of those things you can provide is affordable housing. Another one you can provide is parks or open space. So it's a way, it's, it's like an incentive to have someone, um, provide something to the city in exchange for this incremental amount of additional density.
All right, any questions there? Oh, there's Mike.
More of a comment than a suggestion. Uh, I think the calculations were, were very important to see, Lori, thank you. Uh, and I just want to make sure that people understand what we're looking at here. With this, and I'm, and I'm not opposed to it, what we're seeing here is we would be allowing in our middle, uh, density zone, a very significant increase in density. It, given what's currently on that, on that ground today, which is largely single-family or other type of home, you're going to see a very significant. you're going to see a very significant, uh, amount of infill. That's, that's good. That's, that's part of our goal. What that also says, along with that, comes a significant amount of need for increased infrastructure. And I think to this extent that we have said that we were going to do this incrementally, beginning in an area where we already have that infrastructure or infrastructure is about to be created and that is adjacent, uh, you know, to a reasonable, uh, walking distance or biking distance of public transit, that becomes critically important if we're going to be allowing this amount of density. Uh, to extend that beyond, I think at this point, uh, where the city already has made those investments would be a mistake. Uh, and also be thinking about as we think about how we would incrementally increase, uh, this middle density area. The, give us some thought about, in some experience into how much city investment would have to be uh, made into the infrastructure in order to make this, make that viable. So I think these are very important numbers and it really reaffirms for me, we made a good decision in taking an incremental approach and a quarter-mile limit, uh, on our zone.
Other comments? I, I will take the opportunity. If you look at the, the, uh, black line zones, um, there are some significant, uh, single-family home areas that are going to be increased in density with this, these types of, of, uh, projects. So um, it may be incremental, but I think some people are going to see it kind of differently, shall we say. Uh, so I just wanted to point that out. Uh, a good, um, examples up like, if you look at the area around up like that's, I can, I can hear the comments now before the city council on an area like that. And if you look up on the hill, um, and you know, wanting to drive and around there, I, I see similar situations that would attract some comments. So I'm not saying I'm against it or anything, I'm just um, suggesting that there's likely to be a little pushback on some of this.
I, I did want to comment that, um, a- as you know, we've in the past provided information that says, this is not going to result in a wholesale change to the neighborhood, maybe many decades from now perhaps, but but it's not that everybody is going to sell their house and they're all going to be converted. So, so that message is important. That as these missing middle housing types have become available, that actually the change is very slow.
I, I personally think that that message needs to be put together for the public hearing as what our consideration is with regard to these, uh, changes. If you could draft some language to that effect would be, I think, very important to us and to the council for that matter. Is there any, any objection, Mike? Thank you.
Not objecting at all to your suggestion, Dwight. My concern is that how confident are we that given the current economic situation, given the unavailability of housing and given the profitability that's going to be built into this sort of development, that we wouldn't see a significant and much quicker change over than, than what we're saying. Uh, that's certainly to me, if I were living in that area, uh, that would be my question and concern. And I'm not sure that the economy, uh, in this, in this city and in our region really says that this would be typical to what you've seen in other places. Uh, there's just too much driving, an increase, uh, in density and increase in development. So I'm not, I'm not feeling comfortable that this is going to be a twenty-year evolutionary process. Uh, what I would see would be holding this back uh, would be when you look at the lots, a lot of the lots, uh, that are there, they tend to be very small. And I think what you're going to have to do is have developers come in, investors come in and consolidate pieces in order to, to do a significant development of this size. Uh, but the financial incentive is certainly there. And if you are in that, one of those neighborhoods, uh, you might be persuaded. Uh, when you looked at, uh, what the potential profit would be that you could take it and move on to somewhere else. Uh, so I'll just stop there to say, I, I'm not comfortable myself that a prediction that this is going to be a slow roll is true. Uh, what I think we do have to be able to say to the, uh, and what the city council has to be able to say to our citizenry is that we are making a change in, uh, the way we view the density and view housing within our city. Uh, we have been predominantly single-family. We don't, no longer believe that that's appropriate, given the uh, the economic situation that's out there right now. And we are being asked, along with every other municipality, uh, to make a contribution toward increasing the availability of housing. And this is the most conservative approach we could come up with, to do a control, do this kind of controlled in incremental way. Uh, so I think that's the very clear message we need people to hear and agree to and support. I, I would be very careful about saying that, well, yeah, but this really isn't going to happen, uh, in, in any kind of really substantial, substantial way. That's just asking for trouble down the line. We need people to be buying into what the ultimate change and what the policy direction is.
Right, that the in, the information that we have came mostly from Portland. Uh, there's some information from Seattle and from some other jurisdictions. So it, it was based in, factual information, but again, we can't predict the future, so.
If there's no further comments, we will move on to the next topic.
Okay, so the next several topics really talk about building design and parking and driveways and how those things relate to the building in, again, an effort to, um, address compatibility with existing residences. So the first one, uh, building placement and entry design standards. So first rule, the building duplex or triplex has to face the street. Uh, we don't want buildings that are, uh, you know, facing the back or something. We're trying to create this friendly streetscape with a building face on the front of it. And there has to be a clear place of entry. So either the front door is on the front facade, or if you have a side entrance, then you need something, a walkway and a perhaps a porch covering to identify where the door is. Uh, that's a tru- that's a typical design standard, uh, for residential development. Of course, we don't put those standards on single-family houses, but we're making these more, um, more restrictive because we're providing this additional density and, and we want something in exchange, which is we want it to fit in uh, with the neighborhood. Any comments about those standards?
Oh, you, you addressed my concerns perfectly. I have that interest.
It, it reminds me a lot of the discussion we had on eighty U's, um, and those design standards too, and about entryways and visibility and stuff. So I, I, considering the fact that they're very close to what we already settled on with eighty U's, um, I have no issue with them.
Okay, let's go on to the next item.
All right, so the next item is the garage standards. Now, this is very different from, uh, single-family residences. Basically, what we're saying is that if you have a garage or a carport, it has to be set back twenty feet from the front facade of the house. And there was an illustration of this again in Attachment Three. Um, and the idea again is you're trying to minimize the impact of the garage. You're saying your garage could have two doors, max facing the street. If you have a side entry garage, you could need to have windows, so it looks like a building. Or if you're doing, um, parking, you're doing a parking area, uh, that too has to be set back. And the whole idea of a, um, port co-chair, which was shown in Attachment Four, it's kind of a little archway, so you have a covered area where someone can get out without being in the rain, is an option if you want to do that up at the front facade. And if, if your driveway is continuing to allow surface parking in the back. So those are a lot of standards, they all interact, but the fundamental idea is the garage is not the predominant thing you see when you see this house. On the smaller lots, the forty by one hundred duplex, stacked duplex lots, the parking has to be in the back. It's not an option. Um, in other cases, you can allow some parking. In some cases, you can allow, if it's wide enough, you can allow even a garage. But hopefully the impact is minimized. So I covered about three sections there in that conversation. So let me know if you have questions.
Lori, I just wanted to give you one hundred bonus points for using the term porter, portico share. I love that.
It wasn't me, Opticoast Design, that's who we can. Thank for that.
Any further comments? Well, seeing none, let's move on.
Okay, so, um, uh, one last thing about garages and then I'm going to turn to driveways, which is that the current rules in the single-family zone have a twenty-foot rear yard setback that was put in place maybe ten years ago. And there are a few exceptions to that, a play structure, um, an arbor, uh, et cetera. But in this particular case, we're saying you can put a garage in the back, and that's because there are more units involved here. It's two units or potentially three units. And so, uh, you can only have two garage doors on the front. If you have a triplex, you probably want to move. If you're going to provide a garage, move it to the back. And to do that, we're saying that's okay, no more than three and a ten-foot setback off the rear yard, unless you have an alley, and that's, that's rare in Kenmore. If you have an alley, you only have to be set back five feet because you're probably coming in right the back of your garage. Okay, so I'll move to driveways. If you're ready for that, okay. So, um, again, we're trying to avoid the appearance of wide driveways. So in the front setback, which is the first fifteen feet of the street, your driveway can only be twelve feet wide. Okay, that's enough for one car. Once you get behind the, uh, front facade, the fifteen, I shouldn't say the front facade, it's actually the fifteen feet. You can expand out. But you can also have a driveway that's only ten feet wide that runs down the side of the house. And that was done to allow that parking in the back. Um, to give enough of a driveway and we cleared that with, um, the Development Services Department and, and they knew um, the fire department standards as well. So there are no issues of width in terms of fire protection. But again, a little bit wider in the front yard to allow fire truck access can go down to ten feet in the rear yard. You're always set back off the property line, although if it's, uh, along the side, you can go down to within three feet of the property line. Uh, if you landscape.
Hey, any comments? Oh, there you go, Tracy.
Are there requirements for the kind of landscaping provided? What does it mean to be, to have to provide a landscape strip?
Yeah, we haven't defined that. And, and it may be that, uh, you would want more language around that, which if, if the commission wants that, we could look at our landscape standards and see if there's one that would apply.
Yeah, there, there is a landscape standard, I know, for like the commercial property here along Birmingham Trail. Um, there's verbiage about size and shape and so forth.
Mike?
I think, uh, the landscape standards are going to be very important here. And, uh, thank you for pointing that out, Derek. I think maybe taking a look at those commercial standards would be a good place to start. Uh, in order to increase the density, the real, reality is we're going to have to have shorter setbacks. I think the way to accommodate or to buffer that is going to be through landscaping. So I think having some clear design standards there with options. I mean, we don't want to be prescriptive to the point that we preclude the ability to be able to develop these properties. But I think we should be looking at ways to be able to enhance the neighborhood appeal and, and separation of privacy in these uh, with appropriate landscape.
Is there any objection to those notions? See, see none. Lori, you have some direction?
I do, thank you. All right, um, so the next section is tree preservation. Then there actually aren't any rules in here, uh, except, uh, a note that you have to provide street trees. And the reason for that is by, by not changing the current rules, it means that a duplex or triplex has to comply with the multifamily tree protection standards, which are significantly more, uh, strict than the single-family tree standards. So this means they would have to do a tree protection plan there. Um, you do the calculation of how many tree units you're saving. The city just amended their tree rules um, to protect trees of, of a smaller diameter, breast height, et cetera. So I wanted to call it out because you might ask about trees. And the reason there aren't any tree protection measures written in here is because they now will have to conform by not changing anything. They have to conform to the multifamily tree protection standards.
Any questions or comments regarding that? So when did those, uh, multifamily, um, tree preservation standards take effect? When did they take effect?
So the rules changed, I think, two, um, I want to say two weeks ago. Debbie can jump in if she remembers exactly when. Um, but they probably are already in effect, though, that change. It was to change the diameter of a significant.
Right, so not two years ago, but.
No, no, this is just very recent that the.
That's, that's a good, wow, it's a two. It's much needed too late, I guess, but that's my perspective. Any other comments hearing up? Oh, no, that's not, she's just has a pencil to her head. Okay, so, uh, non-conformances.
Right, so I, there's not much to say about non-conformances. This was the language that, uh, we talked about in, when you provided policy direction. I, uh, I added the, we should, I was sure to add the word existing, uh, as Commissioner Vanderlin pointed out at your last meeting. Uh, so I don't know if there are any other questions or concerns about that.
I don't see any.
Okay, and then, oh.
Go ahead.
Uh, then I was going to say, there are also a variety of other code sections in the document. Some I provided for context, so you could see what came before or what came after to make it make a little bit more sense. I didn't want to include all of the sections or it would have been overwhelming. There are also a few more changes that will have to be made depending on how we fall out with this new change to the duplex-triplex definition. Uh, and so there will be another set of amendments, mostly changing the word apartment to multiple-family dwelling. And I'll be bringing those forward on, uh, the nineteenth. So you can see them, there's, there's not really any policy direction change. It just is, it's a code cleanup. You know, I have to be consistent with definitions throughout the code.
Well, we certainly would like you to be consistent.
So with Development Services, they would love that. So then the last topic, uh, that I have, and you may have other topics, has to do with this policy choice. And this is something, um, that Opticoast brought up when we were talking about the building width and depth, uh, standards. And they said in, in, like, they have twenty years' worth of codes that they've been working on. And they have crafted this thing called wings. They call it wings. So rather than just the building width and the building depth, and you have to build within the square, they allow a building to expand, um, into these wings in certain circumstances. So if you look at this diagram, it was the diagram on the next to the last page of your memo. It shows the square in dark purple. And then there are these little wings that bump out. And it's a way to allow someone to expand the house, uh, without creating a, uh, visual problem. So Without creating a visual problem, so there are rules about where the wing can be located. And how wide it should be and how deep it should be. Where it can be located, et cetera. Staff did not bring those rules forward. We felt it was a complexity at this point, but it does foreclose options for the future. And if the Planning Commission wants us to go back and craft this more refined. Idea allowing these wings that could be added on to the basic square. We will do that. And we we told Tony Perez with Opticoast that we would bring the idea forward. To see if you had an interest in that and that if you do, then we'll again pursue. It would be more design standards about where these things could be placed and how far back they should be set from a wall and and that kind of thing.
Comments? Go ahead, Nathan.
I thought the same thing that you did, Laurie, that this would make it more complex in a way, almost. And I know that can be a burden on investors and builders. But I am curious and I would be all right with hearing what they do have to say about wings. I mean, as you said, since they're the professionals in the industry for twenty plus years, they obviously. Reached this conclusion for a reason, and so I wouldn't mind at least hearing more about this. I don't know if I'm quite to the point of drafting policy about it, but maybe hearing more about. Options that they have, reasons why that they're implemented, pros and cons to it. Maybe an example or two of what that would look like. In terms of, you know, visual and and all that stuff. But that that is just my opinion. I wouldn't mind hearing more about that. I don't think more information hurts. But a-again, I I do agree with you that it starts to get a little complex at that point.
Okay, Tracy. With your mic undone, please.
I wouldn't mind hearing more about it either, and at the same time, I'm curious about how. When we would need to make a decision about it, given that we are on sort of a galloping timeline here. Do we have? Do we have time to hear more about it for this? Round of recommendations?
I I think we do. I I think certainly we have time to hear about. I I think the pros and cons, maybe look at some standards as they've been crafted. That could come to you on the nineteenth. You've done an astonishing job this evening. And initially I was thinking, oh, my gosh, do we even need to have a meeting? But I I would bring back those miscellaneous code sections and we could pursue the question of wings more. And and again, maybe identify pros and cons if the commission wasn't ready to exactly write those standards in. There could be an acknowledged that maybe for the future that could be addressed. So I I do think we have time to look at that issue if the commission wishes to.
Go ahead, Mike.
Hearing more. Particularly having some ideas of what pros and cons are. But at this point, I feel like we've got a pretty tight proposal. Out here, that's easy to understand and is very consistent. So I would be more in favor of going ahead with what we've already have on the table. And then maybe circling back to this at some future time, particularly after we've had enough time to gather some more input. Particularly from the development community. I'm looking at this. It's hard for me to. Anticipate how this might be. Configured in different ways that 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 may be unintended or or we couldn't really judge right now, so. Yeah, let's take, I I'd be willing to. Take a look at this, but I think I'd like to prefer to table it for the future and move ahead with what we've got, which I think is pretty solid.
So just so we're clear about our timelines here. If we. Don't at all address this, I mean, in any way, when are we? Looking at from a process standpoint to circling back at a trotting pace to. This topic.
So if you wanted to circle back, probably the place to put that idea. Would be actually in the conference of plan. Where we would. As an implementation measure, you could say something about, it's in that same group of of policies. Where you've talked about looking at incremental expansion of missing middle housing. You could say something about for the future, consider. Expanding building envelopes for duplexes, you know, I don't know what it would say exactly, but you see it would go into implementation. And then what happens? When the complaint is adopted and you have these implementation measures, then things are pulled out as implementation measures and they end up on a future docket. So I I'm not saying it would be this year, wouldn't probably be till after twenty twenty four, honestly. But eventually it would work its way back.
So what you're saying to refine it is it's not going to come back. We we just pass this up, which might makes a good point. We're not gonna see this again for a year or two.
Right.
Okay.
And then it would depend on what the, you know, the council's priorities are.
Well, of course, they'd beat us or, you know, that's. They throw us the bone and we're supposed to tune, so. Is that okay with everybody is to just to take this off the current? Docket and and save it for later. We need, I need to understand. Go ahead, Tracy.
Does it have? I'm pretty curious about it, and I think one reason that I'm curious about it is because it on surface, not knowing much about it. So I can't make an informed assessment of this is true, but on the surface, it seems to me that it could result in more variety. In forms of houses, which to me. Would be visually pleasing. Like I think one thing, one problem that I see in some of our neighborhoods and developments that is not people friendly, in my opinion. Is that the houses just all look the same. They're like just, yeah. With no variety, and so if I I I'm curious about it for that reason. So if we have time to hear about it. And discuss it for this round, I'm open to that.
Other? Opinions? Mike, are you?
Yes, not an opinion necessarily, but a thought. When I read through this and get a little deeper, what this really came out to me is this is very site specific. And that's really what this is intended to do, is to recognize that there may be opportunities, given the configuration of a particular subject. Site that you could do something different with it. So i- in a way, it is an opportunity to add a unique approach. But I think understanding all of the consequences of that. Is something we're not going to get a good understanding or good handle on right away, so. Again, I think I prefer to have more time to discover and hear and learn more about this before. We could do that now, but before I think we would make a decision and add it into code, I I think that takes a little more time. Than we have.
We have two different opinions. Do we have other commissioners that would like to weigh in on this? So Derek, I I is that a hand?
I'm just stating that I am indifferent.
Oh, you're indifferent, okay, so he's in the middle on the fence. Anyone else? Oh, Mariel, I see you there.
I I'm interested in learning a bit more. I feel like I can't make a decision at this point.
So I I didn't exact, you kind of broke up there.
I'm I'm in favor of learning more about it because I don't feel I'm dumb enough at this point.
Okay, Christina.
Christiana, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Goodness, Christiana.
I'm also curious about learning. I I would like to learn more. I also do not feel like I can make a a decision. With the what we have here.
Anyone else want to weigh in? Okay, so I'm going to, I'm gonna go with the. Christiana and Mariel and Tracy, so that makes. Majority to hear more. Sooner than later.
Right.
And I want to say from my perspective, that doesn't mean that. I'm going to go ahead further with it, but I I'm. Here anymore.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, is there anything else that you would like us to discuss tonight, Laurie?
No, there's there's one point that I I forgot to mention when I was talking about the building dimensions. Which is that we put in at at Opticoast's suggestion, some flexibility to allow a slight variation in width or depth. Due to unique circumstances, et cetera, and that that decision would be made by. It reads city manager, but that's his or her designee, and it would be someone in the Development Services Department. So I want to call that out. That is a policy direction that we haven't discussed. And staff continues to recommend it, but I did want to, I meant to make that point and I didn't.
What what page is that on your memo?
Oh, dear. Okay, let's see if I can find the page. It, I think it's right at the bottom of the chart of the dimensional standards.
Oh, it's so it's in.
Nine, it's on page nine.
Of attachment one.
Right, correct. Again, I believe it's right at the very bottom of the chart that shows building widths and depths.
Yeah, I see it there. Page sixteen of the total document.
Okay, that's, thank you.
It reads, in rare cases, the city manager may adjust maximum building widths and depths by up to twenty percent. To make more efficient use of land or to address unique circumstances.
Right, any questions or concerns about that? Or go ahead, Tracy.
You're muted.
Can you describe what the, what a rare circumstance might be and what that what that means and looks like?
Yeah, I can try. Again, Opticoast felt that this was important, so say you had a lot that was. I'll try to imagine something here. You have a lot that is of a certain width. And your house has to be further set back from the side than you ever anticipated. Because of some physical constraint, like a preexisting rockery or a tree. And so you were losing some of your width. Maybe because you were trying to avoid getting into this area. So instead, you've got a few feet of extra depth to. To get your square footage back, but not exactly where it should be. I mean, I'm just making this up. So that would be a rare circumstance where you have a unique condition that might lead one to conclude. That you could have a few more feet, you know, you're you're doing a stacked duplex, you're caught between a rockery and a tree. You only have twenty two feet in width and you can only get twenty, so you get some extra depth. There you go. That's my best rare circumstance.
I, I totally love that. Because we're trying to save trees and I think the tree feature right there. This is really radical, but I've almost wondered why we don't try to force moving a structure a few feet to the left or right to save trees. If it makes total and obvious sense on the lot, why don't you slide it a bit to preserve a few trees? If there's no real reason for it to not be moved.
Christiana.
Would this affect setback to an existing property?
You can't modify setbacks through this rule. So it's only the building width and the building depth.
And it is it right to say that it seems like it would only happen if the full, say, width. Couldn't be achieved because of these. Special circumstances that that's when you get more depth. It wouldn't just be like you get the same width but more depth just because somebody decided.
No, I I mean, I'm I'm trying to, I I can't imagine every unique circumstance that there might be, but the idea is you build in the box. And you would have to have a really unusual circumstance to convince us that you should not build in the box. Maybe it's something at the back of the lot and so you want to make a cutout. But you need a little bit more over here to, again, to get your square footage, and so. That would be another rare circumstance, but it's supposed to be rare. We specifically put the word rare in there. It's not supposed to be a free for all.
And I I, yeah, I appreciate that and I I hear what you're saying, and I think the reason that I raised it is because. It's like opening up a box of.
It is.
Of we don't know what, you know. And so you mean, we'd have to just trust that, you know, these were would be rare. And that the discretion of the person making the decisions would be, you know, keeping with our. General policy direction and not going off in their own policy, you know, like there just is a lot of.
Right.
There.
That's true. That's why I wanted to call it out because it is a circumstance where there's some flexibility given.
Flexibility, yes, and which I do appreciate flexibility and at the same time, when it comes to. Administering policy, like it, there's a little bit of a tension there in. Allowing for that kind of flexibility. Because it does depend on variables we don't know and can't control.
Right.
I I think we have to trust the city. In this, the departments that oversee these as common sense as well, though, when they're making these rare. Exceptions that they're writing in. These stipulations on these rare exceptions as well, that even though we're opening the box, we're also keeping a lengthy rope on. How far it can be opened and and so forth. It's, I mean, I'm assuming that's built into this, that. There would be stipulations that would have to be followed.
Derek, we're gonna give you the end of the rope to pull on it.
The the out, the outer, there is an outer number, which is is twenty percent, so that is the end of the rope.
Oh, that's good to know that. Okay, any further? Any further topics on this memo? Or this is your last chance.
I have no further topics on the memo and and what I'm hoping is now I'm going to come back and say. Can we schedule this hearing for May, May seventeenth?
Well, assuming that we approve the. Draft to go to the hearing next week, in like in two weeks, which seems possible, Christiana had her hand up.
I am not available on May seventeenth. And there's no way I will be able to be available. I'd rather not say in public why. I, do I, did you get my email?
Yes, I did.
Okay. I, that's all I I'll say then.
Any further comments about availability for May seventeenth? I didn't hear, get any, I just got one email.
I have a comment, but it's not related to availability.
You had a comment about it? Go ahead.
Not about availability, but I had a comment with regards to what we just familiar, actually on the. Definitions for duplexes and triplexes. I'm just something that's been kind of hitting my craw a little bit. In a sense, and thinking back to the conversation about condos and. Housing associations and it's just, it's a concern. I was trying to figure out a way to express it. housing associations and it's just, it's a concern. I was trying to figure out a way to express it. And I just want to be able to state it for the record. My concern with the question of housing associations is that historically, they were created in order to further permit segregation and to keep certain people out of certain neighborhoods. And so I'm just thinking back to our values and what we see for our community here. And I just have, I just have this little kind of sense of concern just with the idea of housing, of housing associations and what they could potentially do in segregating available housing. So I just wanted to state that for the record. That I just, I just, I, just, just my concern on that point. And I don't know if it's something that we could maybe further have a conversation as a group, have conversation or some guidance by our DEI consultant, by the DEI task force. I just, I want to make sure again that we, as our community develops, is being developed and afforded to our values. This discrimination in housing can be really tricky and how do you prove when you're discriminated? And people have a really great way of using rules on the book if they want to from various reasons. And so I want to make sure then that we're living to our values.
Are there other commissioners that share her concerns? I don't see.
I, I, I have never been a part of a housing association, but I have been a part of a condo association. And I'm not sure those are the same thing. The condo association, although I guess the housing association is run by its members that live there as well, like the condo association, but yeah, the condo association was just, was more about us arguing over how we were going to pay for the new roof. It wasn't so much, well, and I suppose at some point, what color we're going to paint the outside, but it was, uh, yeah, it was more of a collaborative, how do we pay for these expenses kind of a thing versus anything else.
Yeah, housing associations are typically brought in by residents of a particular community, so a condo association would be a housing association. So I'm not saying that would necessarily happen, but I'm just expressing a concern that I have with the question of a condo or housing association.
Mike?
Yes, this concern has come up in a number of other contexts over time. Might it be Lori or Debbie, a, a good use of our city attorney's time to come in and give the commission some information on what the current state of the rules are that that are, that were instituted to prevent segregation and what the protections are out there today, so we understand really what the play, world of the play is today versus what it might have been in the past.
Well, exclusionary zoning is, in terms of preventing racial or other minorities, was outlawed in nineteen sixty-eight.
Yeah, it was outlawed in nineteen sixty-eight, but through housing associations, again, oftentimes, insurance can, can, because they are in essence private. They're private associations in many ways, right? And so I just, again, I'm just expressing a concern here. And I think it's something that if we could maybe further, yeah, I think the attorneys may not necessarily be a bad way to proceed, but I think also the DEI task force, as well as DEI construction, that I think guidance might be helpful to that end.
Tracy.
And, and I know, I know there are laws barring discrimination in housing and that they do date back to the eight sixties. And, and I do also hear what Marielle is saying in terms of how we find people who will find ways to morph and change their preferences. And that we need to consider that, and also that there, there are legacy effects too of, of housing discrimination and redlining and things that we, that we really should be thinking about as we're developing policy. So I, 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 I am, I'm, I hear you, Marielle, and I, I do think that's a valuable discussion for us to have and to under, you know, so that we understand the effects of, of the policy that we're recommending.
But I think the short answer is that missing middle is one way to kind of take down some of those exclusionary, single-family zoning barriers. So in that case, it is more in line with DEI, it is taking out that. So after the racial, specific racial discrimination was banned in the sixties, there was also then a chat, there's been no really further challenge since a case about zoning since then. So in effect, you went from racial zoning to exclusionary zoning by single-family zoning. And that's one reason why missing middle is we're trying to open up that box of single family. And, and DEI is one of the reasons for doing that.
Yeah, and I, and I appreciate that and I share that view of it and, and that for me, that's one of the reasons it's important for us to be considering it for our community and not just considering it, but implementing it. And also what I hear Marielle saying, I think is a little bit different and maybe more nuanced and still worth thinking about. Am I reading you right, Marielle? Yeah.
Okay, Nathan had his hand up.
Uh, I was just going to say, I think we've talked about this in the past. I can't remember when it was, but Lori and Debbie, I believe you sent something out to the commission that talked about the legacy or history of those kinds of policies within the city of Kenmore. And we had that discussion as a commission on how to overcome that and what steps we wanted to take to try and address that. I can't remember exactly what we decided on, if it was a, a link posted to the website that took residents of homeowners and owners associations to state services that helped to get rid of that or there's something around the state. I know that, but I know that we've had this discussion before and we've been very intentional cognizant of it as we've moved along and if that is a, a critical thing that we do want to bring back, then maybe we can try and look over past notes or minutes and, and that discussion that we've had and those resources and services that we, we've thought about and reflected on in the past.
Right, we had looked up information on racially restrictive covenants in Kenmore and provided that information and then also information on how individuals could remove those, even though they're illegal, they, they still exist on covenants and how they could be removed. Certainly there could not be any kind of a covenant today that could be written that would include that kind of language. And I will say for condo association, if, if the duplex and triplex were to be come for sale versus for rent, I'm not sure that for a two or a three unit project that the the condo association bylaws would be so expansive that, that this would be of concern. I of course could be wrong, but generally, I think as Commissioner Wykoff mentioned, it's for things like who takes care of the landscaping and and what color can the building be painted and do we need a new roof and how are we going to pay for it?
Well, one of the, uh, one of my experiences is as a president of a homeowner's association. And it, uh, some of you may know, know the area, which is Sheridan Beach. And it was a wild ride, let me tell you, and the old saying goes, the old saying goes, is that if you really want to know what local government's about, then sit on the board of a homeowner's association and that's where the rubber really meets the road. So I, 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 I actually completely understand Marielle's perspective because there's a lot of quiet stuff that goes on in homeowner's associations and that most people really don't know about. And I, so I, 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 I get that. And so Debbie and Lori, you'll be able to dig something up for us to look at and send us in, um, as some, somehow.
Yeah, I, I think we can provide the historical information that we previously provided. There, there's no conceivable way that I can think of that we can tackle the question of a condo association in the regulations. I, I just don't see how we would possibly do that. You already have tackled the issue in your policies where you've been very clear about Kenmore being a welcoming community and, and listening to historically disadvantaged folks and that kind of thing. So I'm not sure beyond the policy and you've put in a lot of new strong policy that there's a regulation that could be written. We, we couldn't write a land use regulation that would speak to how a condo association conducts its business.
Well, also on that point is that some of this is RCW as far as what can be done and how it's done and what are the requirements and certain types of associations? And so we're not, as a city or even a county, do we have the authority to supersede the RCW? Marielle, I saw you.
Thank you, Lori. And, and I, and again, I, I was mentioning, I wasn't quite sure what it would be, right? But I did feel that I needed to voice this disquiet that I have with it. Because again, our values, I think, are very clear and we're taking strong stances in many, very thoughtful positions in what we've been covering. But again, I felt that it's important to, to state it because I, I just, I do know that oftentimes, you know, our best intent can be superseded, right? By other procedures or processes that we have no control over, right? And I want to make sure that we're centering upon, you know, the most marginalized members of our community and really thinking about how we want to continue in, in centering our efforts, efforts around, you know, anti-racist action, right? And so just, it's really more my, my making a comment about it than I think more than what it does.
Thank you very much. So is there any further items for the good of the order?
I, I just have one thing that it's kind of sort of related.
Of course, Debbie.
She wouldn't mind.
Oh, none of us would mind.
So actually, the, the, related to the DEI task force, the city manager and I will be attending the DEI task force on Thursday and to give a little presentation and part of that presentation is to provide context on discrimi- discriminatory practices in housing. And also to let them know what the planning commission has been working on in relation to missing middle as a way to kind of kind of wade into the exclusionary, single-family zone. So I just wanted to kind of let you know that, and that's the reason why the nineteen sixty-eight kind of date popped in, because I had to go back in my planning history and to, to look up some of these key court cases regarding discriminatory housing practices and redlining and racially restricted covenants. So I'm happy to share that presentation with you as well, if that would be of interest, so that you can kind of see some of the, the context.
Okay, thank you. Christiana?
Um, I, I, regarding the missing middle and at the, the council meeting last week, um, a council member had some pretty strong concerns. And the language that was used was, they were horrified. And that, that it was reminiscent, what was in our recommendation was reminiscent of redlining practices. And I want to make sure that what we are recommending is not reflective of that, so, um, I'm new to the, to the commission. I don't know what was put out there before, you know, prior to me in regards to this. But I, I do have a concern that this isn't reflective of those practices, what we are putting out there. So I don't know where we stand with that now and what is actually being presented to the council. Can anyone share some information in regards to this?
I can tell you why we were at the council meeting. So Lori and I were at the council meeting to give the council an update on the process of the planning commission's docket, where you were, what the next steps were, to let them know when this would be coming forward. We did not get into any discussion about the recommendations. Although the council can obviously go back and take a look at what your recommendations, policy direction has been. So the comments were made in light of, I think, perhaps listening to some of the planning commission discussions and what the preliminary recommendation is regarding missing middle. And I think the council member's comment reflects that, that particular council member wished to go further and thinking that an incremental approach was not the way to go. So that is my summary of why we were there, the context of the discussion. And I think, you know, that discussion might come up when you present your recommendations to the council. But again, this was not giving any further direction to staff or the planning commission at this time. It was just raising that particular concern.
Is there any further comment on that? I would like to take a moment of point of information. Just like this commission has seven members and each of us have our own mind and our own perspective of how we look at things. That's why they put a variety of us on the commission. Well, the same applies to the city council. So you, you know, it takes four of them to make policy. And if they're working together, they usually try to do more than four. They try to get five to seven. So you, you have, sometimes some council members are a little more quiet than others. And it's sometimes hard to read how things are really falling out. So it's, it's like us, we, you know, we, we're not sure how it's all going to end until we take that final vote after the public hearing. And I think that the same thing can be said of, of the council members. There's a lot of positioning that goes on. I'm not saying that that's wrong. I'm just, having been on a council for sixteen years, I sort of understand how making sausage is done. And our job is to get the, the initial sausage into the liner so that they can cook it. So, um, I, don't, don't over, I mean, those are good conversations to listen to and to take to heart, but not, not necessarily, you know, take them as directions from one or two, because they have to vote on things like we do in order to make a direction to us or a direction for an ordinance. So is, is that a fair statement, Debbie? Okay, Debbie's been around city councils and planning commissions for a long time and Lori's right behind her there. I'm sorry if I offended anyone, but I thought I'd take the moment to say that. So is there anything further for the good of the order? Oh, there is Lori, jump right in.
So I, I want to acknowledge that Commissioner Matthews will not be at the public hearing scheduled now for May seventeenth, but certainly the audio of the video of the meeting will be available and, and I'm assuming that the commission itself would not be making any final decisions that evening, but would be taking up the topic again in June, so.
And could we ask?
So everyone's okay with that.
And then also in light of that, as well as for our records, as we move forward to adopting a position that's going to go to the council, could we try to get the minutes of the public hearing as soon as possible and particularly before the following meeting? I'm, I'm sorry Rita, if that's going to create a issue, but that would be good, I think, for all of us and helpful for the city council to look at the, at the record when they consider what we are going to do.
You bet.
Okay. Well, it is, according to my Alexa, is eight fifty-one, so we've done it again. We are adjourning before nine. I shouldn't have said her name because now she's stalking me. It's an odd number, so, uh, the It's an odd number, so uh, the uh planning commission meeting for April fifth of twenty twenty-two is hereby adjourned.
Good night, all.
Good night.